So, this meeting is to hear and act on requests for changes in zoning and special procedures. Please call the roll.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Hancock.
Here.
Mr. Bedell.
Here.
Mr. Fagan.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing and Executive Meeting. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing and acting on requests for changes in the zoning and special procedures. I am Keith Taylor, Chair of the Commission, in addition to other members of the Planning Commission. I would also like to introduce to my right Jacob Trimble, the Director of Planning, and the planners assigned to tonight's petitions. I hope you've had, picked up a copy of the Public Hearing Guidelines brochure and tonight's public hearing notice, which are on the table just outside the door. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting and agenda lists for the order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you are here for. If you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit to the chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan to subscribe to the Planning Commission's agendas. By doing this, you will be able to access a copy of the Commission's report when it goes to the County Council. The Commission will not make a decision on every petition heard this evening. Typically, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petitions at the next executive meeting in August. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting by July 28th in 2025 will be distributed to the Planning Commission in their executive meeting agenda pack. Written comment can be sent via email to planning@stlouiscountymo.gov. If additional information is requested, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the filing guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allowed at 15 minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition or with concerns. Persons speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief, avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by the other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, I will ask for a show of hands by persons in favor, in opposition, and with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. So the first petition heard tonight will be PC-18-25 Sumaka LLC.
Good evening, Commissioners. In front of you is PC-18-25 Sumuka LLC. This is not turned on yet. This is a request for a change in zoning from R5 and floodplain R5 to C8 and floodplain C8 for the proposed use of a dental office and offices on a 1.37 acre tract located on the east side of Hall's Ferry Road approximately 440 feet north of Capitol Drive. On your left is a St. Louis County outline showing the location of the proposed use up in North County, and on the right is an aerial showing the parcel outlined in red. This is just a zoomed in view of that parcel, still outlined in red. This is a land use map showing that yellow parcel that's hatched over and the surrounding uses, primarily single-family homes and some institutional uses. This is the public hearing sign in front of the property. This is looking across Hall's Ferry Road facing west. This is looking north down Hall's Ferry Road, and this is looking south down Hall's Ferry Road in the opposite direction. This is the building face looking east. This is the side lot looking on the eastern side. This is the backyard looking north. This is the north side yard facing east. This is the front pavement facing northwest. And now you will hear from the petitioner.
Thank you, sir.
And then you can come up here, and you'll just press this right arrow to click through your slides. They're in there.
Good evening, everybody. So, I'm here today to do my presentation on the zoning changes for my property. This is the first time I'm self-defending myself, so it's a big learning curve, and thank you everybody who helped me in doing this thing. So, the proposed change I'm looking for is to basically use this property as a leasing to various varieties of offices such as dental or any kind of rental spaces for like, who can use the land and together for any kind of insurance agencies or anything like that can multi-use, can use that. So, we basically, after I bought this property, we cleaned up the land and everything so that, and also the MST's, they're also doing some work, so they also help us in chiming in some of the cleanups in the backyard. So those are the aerial uses of the property. So the current zoning change is F8. And then, but, I mean, we realized that this property can be used potentially for a commercial usage such as varieties of offices. So multipurpose, so that's what we're proposing on using the C8 multipurpose varieties of rental spaces such as either dumpster rentals or offices, legal practices, or any kind of good other attorney offices, anything like that. Benefits of zoning, so first of all, this property has been sitting there for a long time with no.
I'm sorry, would you speak louder?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, the benefits of the zoning purposes is to bring additional revenue and make it more useful, and obviously self-improvement as well as the community-wise, we want to make this more flourishing in this property. So, as you can see, there is a good opportunity of this property because there's a good traffic in front of the road, and also the property was heavily cleaned up, a lot of trees and junk that was sitting in before I brought this property in. So potential commercial tenants, so we are trying to, after we get the approval, so basically we are trying to get either for multivarieties of users, either various purposes of offices, or anybody who can use the land and the office together, like such as dumpster rentals or any kind of thing, who can use the office and as well as the land. And there's a pretty good support and traffic impact, I guess, so the existing traffic is really supporting the building for its commercial usage. So, this is again, potentially I brought this for my daughter as a long-term investment. She's actually getting the, she's my first child, and she's actually joining the college, and she wants to use this property as her future investments, actually. So, yeah, that's all about it, and so mostly this is for my personal investment. Thank you again for listening and for your time and opportunity.
Yes. I have a question related to parking. I didn't see any parking spaces striped or anything.
So there is six plus two parking lots in right in front of the building. So right now, the parking lot is paved, and the marks are a little lighter, so we're going to make it paved, repaved, and basically painted dark.
So do you, do you have any prospective tenants right now?
No, not really. So we are looking for prospective tenants because first of all, I wanted to do the cleanups and all those things, so I have heavily invested in cleaning up the land so that we can get good tenancy over there rather than getting like a more troublesome, but basically, yeah, trying to get like a good long-term tenancy is what we want to make the property more attractive.
Do you, how long have you owned the property? When did you acquire the property?
So I acquired last year, July, pretty much the same time, from St. Louis Real Estate Rental Agencies, I guess, so they are the owners. They were the, previously, they owned this property for about eight to 10 years, and then I acquired the property from them.
And the building doesn't look that large, so you said multi-tenants. I can't imagine more than one or two businesses.
So, yeah, the building is divided into two sections. One has the four office rooms with the central room, and the other one is a garage space. They've actually made it like a office room, the previous tenancy. So if anybody who wants to use the land, they can use this garage space and the land, or if they want to use the whole building and the land, there will be a single tenancy.
And it's, you had dental office, legal, op, legal office, and then even, I thought I saw car dealership?
Car dealership, I know it has to go through a lot of permissions and approval, but basically, this is like, if, if somebody's interested in doing a car dealership, probably they have to go through their proper approvals and permissions. But at this point, if I'm leasing it, I'm leasing it for a dental office or an attorney office, anybody who wants to use that fourth space.
Ms. Kennedy or Ms. Freudel, can you clarify for the, for the purposes of tonight's hearing, what was put onto the application and what was put onto the public hearing notices of the uses that would be permitted at this site?
So the public hearing notice was advertised for office and dental office uses.
So for the purposes of all future uses at this site, this site for, for the purposes of this evening would only ever permit offices and dental offices?
Okay.
As per the public hearing notice and per what you put on your application?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And last thing is, obviously, you see that the driveway, the concrete is in pretty rough shape.
Right, so, yeah, the proposed, basically, one, I mean, eventually when I get, I wanted to basically repave it and put some nice little parking lines which are already there on that, yes.
So, I just, I guess this is a question either for Jacob or for you. It says, one of the slides, I think, mentioned dumpster storage?
Yeah, so if somebody who wants to use the front office and has the land as like a public, like a, like, or what's it like, a storage, let's say somebody who wants to do a dumpster rental, so they'll use the office, they'll use the land to keep, retain the equipment, or a contractor, somebody who wants to put some space over there.
So I want to offer some clarity as it pertains to the application of the St. Louis County zoning ordinance to your request. Offices do not allow for onsite storage of the types of materials that you're describing here today. So as per your application, as per the, per the public hearing notice, it could exclusively be offices and dental offices, and it is not the interpretation that the storage of such materials at the site would be, would be permitted under the requested zoning change.
Okay, so then, like, if at all, I, if I get a tenant, then I have to go and approach the office again, I believe, right?
You would be required to request a new change in zoning.
Okay, sure. So then at this time, then I will basically list the leasing only for the office usage only.
And dental.
Dental office and office are the permitted uses that you're requesting this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
What you're talking about, are you planning for somebody to use this rear of the property for storage? Is that what you're planning on?
Yes, so I thought somebody who can use the office and as well as the land together, like a, like their own equipment putting in or something like that, but like Jacob basically clarified, it looks like I can't do that. So if I had to do that, I have to come through and process again. For now, I, yeah.
And I've seen MST's done, went back there and.
Cleared.
Performed a lot of work.
Right.
Is that because it's flooded?
It's, I think there is a.
Flood plain?
The floodplain, and also they were actually doing the trenching work, the new one, so that it's basically right now, it had a green vegetation a lot, and clogged up the drain system, so they clarified it, and they cleaned up all the vegetation, and they're doing the new landscaping there.
Okay, I have one more question for you, because I was out there today, and we're talking about the parking lot, there is no parking lot. It's, it's just gravel and a little piece of concrete. And also, the, your approach going out, your entrance, I would think if you were going to lease this out, you're going to need to widen that because it's made for one car to go out, and it's a high curb cut, and I'm sure, for safety reasons.
Sure.
So, Road Department is probably going to ask you to change that.
Can I just ask a question? Is C8 the type of zoning that we have to approve each tenant?
So, for the purposes of, as a procedural question, the C8 planned commercial district does allow for the applicant to request specific uses. So if the applicant did request uses, or did propose to put in with an occupancy for a use outside of office or dental office, that applicant would be required to come back and request new uses, although under the, under the public hearing notice, it was only advertised very narrowly for offices and dental offices, so it would require a full new zoning procedure if there were to be any other types of uses at this site.
And then as part of the occupancy, would that address the concrete and the curb cut?
So the procedurally subsequent to this, what would be required is the submission of a site development plan, which would be submitted to this commission to ensure that it met all the conditions of the C8 planned commercial district ordinance that would be passed by the County Council. And it would be during that review that the parking lot would be reviewed for, ensuring that it meets all requirements and also other items such as if architectural review were to be required as per this ordinance, and as well if landscaping requirements, not if there are landscaping requirements, that they are being met as proposed on that site development plan.
What's the, what's the condition of the interior of the building right now? Is it in rough shape, or?
No, it is, it is good. Right now, so, yes, so we got it painted and everything, so it has four rooms and one central room, and it has a restroom with men's urinals and everything, so it is, it is in a very good shape right now.
Oh, it has urinals?
Yes.
So it was, it was used as an office?
Yes, previously, the St. Louis Rental Company, or they used to use this as an office, yes, for their rental agencies, and they had all the stuff and everything in the office. Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for the time and opportunity.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any persons representing a group that would wish to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Are there any persons representing a group that would wish to speak in opposition or concern? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition or concern? If not, we don't need a rebuttal. So, at this time, could we have a show of hands of those in favor?
You can vote for yourself.
That's one. And in opposition or concern? Zero. Okay, well, that concludes this hearing. Thank you very much.
And I just want to just let you know that when your hearing is concluded, you are free to go, because we will go through various hearings.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we have PC-19-25 Richard and Ruth D. Lo.
Good evening, PC-19-25 Richard and Ruth D. Lo. It's a request for a conditional use permit in the R, in the C2 shopping district for a proposed use of an apartment dwelling unit located on a tract size of 0.41 acres located on the southwest side of the intersection of Graboy Road and Belo Avenue. As the Commission can see on the context map on your right of your screen, the site is located in South County, and to your left, nope, left is the context map, right is your aerial of the photo, and you can see that outlined in red. Here's a larger aerial of the site, again, that site outlined in red. So, from the context map, you can see along Graboy is primarily commercial with some single-family and some multifamily, and some industrial utilities spread throughout along Graboy Road. And then behind Graboy Road is really where you see a lot of your duplex, townhomes, and single-family residences. This is looking south onto the public hearing sign. This is looking north across Graboy Road. This is looking east up Graboy Road. This is west along Graboy. This is south onto the property. And this is northwest looking at the back of the property. You can see the concrete parking and the detached shed. And next we'll have the petitioner.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm here to request a conditional use permit.
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Ruth D. Lo.
Okay, thank you.
We're here to request an occup, conditional use permit to allow occupancy in the apartment dwellings at 8700 Graboy in Afton. There is currently a commercial occupancy permit, and we are looking to obtain the residential permit that would permanently allow dwelling of the, that would allow, permanently us to allow to have dwelling of both commercial and residential. The building was built as a mixed-use property, commercial and residential. This building historically has always had a residential and commercial business occupancy. We have followed the guidelines, we've, so this is the survey that we had done, that the Planning Commission asked for, the bounds and means, record locator for our legal description of the property. That's my presentation, sorry.
Mistress, do we have any questions?
So what you're saying is you want to use the first floor for commercial and the second floor for residential?
That is correct.
Was it currently, was it used for residential before?
No, we owned it as a, or we occupied the storefront as our business for 18 years.
And the upstairs also?
We used a storeroom and that out of the building, so, yes.
So, as far as parking, if the lower level's going to be commercial?
Mm-hmm.
And you're going to rent the upstairs?
Correct.
Is that going to be for how many people living there, would you think?
I mean, it's a.
Senators, you know, I mean.
It's a three-bedroom apartment.
So, we're probably going to have two cars.
Two cars. So the back parking pad had, we built, we added, and it has parking for three cars, and then we have street parking alongside the fence that our commercial, our business people used.
And when you had your business here, how many people that would be there?
At any given time? We had a, Callahan's Tuxedo Store was in there, so there could be one person, there could be five. There is ample overflow parking across the street at the grocery store that they don't have any customers, so they would never objected if we had, you know, more people show up at the same time.
And who are you, do you have anybody that's ready to raise from you right now as far as the commercial?
No, the building is for sale, and so the person that wants to buy the building wants to live and run a business in there.
Thank you very much. Any other question?
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Are there any persons here representing a group that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Are there any individuals like to speak for a group in opposition or concern? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition or concern? Okay, no rebuttal. I have a hand count of the people that are in favor of this petition, please. That'll be two, and opposition, zero, so the count is two to zero, and that concludes this hearing. Thank you very much.
While Mr. Mueller is coming up for the next petition, just for the commission's understanding is that we are actually going to bring to you a report this evening after the public hearing to discuss the petition that you just heard, giving a recommendation for you for this evening.
Very good, thank you. And the next petition is PC 20-25, Majid Towing LLC.
Yes, sir. So as you stated, this is PC 20-25, Majid Towing LLC. The request is currently a conditional use permit in the M1 District for the proposed use of a towed vehicle storage yard. It's located on a 1.53 acre tract of land. And the location itself is the south side of Rebus Barracks Road, northwest of the intersection of Rebus Barracks Road and Green Park Road. As you can see, the location of the property, it is nestled kind of right there off of Rebus Barracks Road. And then if you're aware of the Grants Trail Running and Biking Trail, it is also directly adjacent to the property as well there to the south. Here's a larger aerial of everything, the property itself is outlined in red. Here's a land use map of the surrounding area. Here's a picture of the public hearing sign, this is the east side of the property, sorry, facing east from the west. Here's the public hearing sign, east facing southeast. Here is east facing west inside the property, or sorry, just outside of the property. Here is west facing east from inside the property. Here is southeast facing southwest. Here is southeast facing southwest again, kind of a closer up angle of the edge of the property. Here is north facing south. South facing north. And that's everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come up, please.
For the record, my name is Jay Mueller with American Engineering. I'm representing Majid Towing. The, we're requesting CPR in the M1 and Bloodplane M1 area for the towing. The primary objective of this type of towing is if somebody has a broken down car where they are picked up and towed over to this site. It's what we call short-term storage. And at the same time, if you are in a handicap and somebody calls in and they're not permitted in a handicap, this could also be a towing project. But anyway, that's what the main object is, short-term towing. So we've got a towing lot in which we are enclosing it with a site-proof fence. We're asking for a variance of the site-proof fence from a 10-foot to an eight-foot. The reason being that we feel that a 10-foot, we also have landscaping around the perimeter of this site-proof fence. But the 10-foot gives an institutional look rather than a pleasing look to the, we'll say, the public. As cars go by and the towing cars that we put inside the towing facility are basically four-foot high. And an eight-foot fence should cover that completely so that we wouldn't have anything objectionable facing the public. We're looking to put a building in, which is an office building. The people will come to pick up their car and they will stay on the outside of the towing area and towing facilities and parking areas inside the fenced area. They will pay for, at the office building, they will pay for their fines or whatever is assessed to them. And then they will, they will, the operators there will bring in, bring the car to the entrance and they will take it home or wherever they take it. Now, there is two items that I am asking for a variance. The first variance, as I said, is going from a 10-foot fence, site-proof fence, to an eight-foot site-proof fence. The other is, the ordinance calls for landscaping, which means landscaping islands. Now, landscaping islands on the interior where we've already got it fenced in, site-proof fenced in, plus all the shrubbery we've put, trees and shrubs that we've put on the exterior. Nobody will see it as far as the public, so that it, there shouldn't be, and we feel there shouldn't be a need for, we'll say, concrete islands and so forth and so on within this parking area. And it is short-term parking area. Now, another thing, before I came here, I talked to a member of the Department of Transportation, and Greg Marshall. And there were two items that came up from the Highway Department. One item that we questioned is, they said that no entrance off of Green Park Road, which is a newly constructed Green Park Road. Okay, now the thing about it is, way back when we started this, I talked to Greg and we thought that it would be a good idea to move it from Rebus Barracks Road, which has 19,000 some traffic per day, as compared with Green Park, it has 3,800 traffics per day. In other words, there's five times as much traffic on Rebus Barracks than there is on Green Park. So as a result, we'd have less congestion with a towing truck taking a car into our site going off of Rebus Barracks as compared with if we did it off of a road that didn't have hardly any traffic. And that's why we put it on a situation where we have an entrance and exit off of Green Park Road. He recommended that we sit down with him and some of his people and go over this item and he thought we could work it out. The other item is that it says in this letter from the Highway Department, they wanted to charge $2,623 per parking stall. Okay, now we have 74 of those that are short-term parking stalls. It amounts to $194,000. Now, we would like, I asked Greg about that and he said it shouldn't apply, but he said that would be up to yourselves. And the reasoning, his reasoning was that it wouldn't apply for this situation since it's short-term parking, it's enclosed, and they are already correcting the situation on Rebus Barracks and putting a brand-new Green Park Road that was also designed to carry heavy traffic. We won't have heavy traffic, but we won't have heavy, as far as physical weight, we won't have construction vehicles going on that road, although the road will be designed to carry that because it's industrial. Basically, that's it, that's what we're asking for, is a towing facility. Right now, it's being used, as the picture showed, is being used as cars parked there. And legal or not legal, but anyway, they're, they've been parking there. So, we want to make it all legal.
Jacob, can you provide some clarification on why the parking stalls are $2,500 each? And that's in our, that's in our ballpark?
Right, yes, so Mr. Mueller is describing two different issues. So the first issue is something that came to our attention in the Planning Department when we also received comments from the Department of Transportation and Public Works as it pertains to, they review all special procedures and changes in zoning requests and provide comment prior to public hearing for the Planning Commission to consume and digest. We will have a conversation with our colleagues in Transportation and Public Works to discuss their comment about access, because it does, their comments do state no, no entrance onto Green Park Road. So we will discuss with them whether that is truly their intent and if so, work with the petitioner to, you know, work with them to help them through that sort of, through that decision-making process. The second, the second issue is, this, this site is subject to a request for a conditional use permit, which is not subject to trend, to the Traffic Generation Assessment ordinance. So at this point, this is not, this is not a request for a special district. This is a request for a conditional use permit, which does not have TGA subject to it. Now, Transportation Public Works will, does have the authority to impose fees upon a developer to ensure that their development does not negatively impact the roadways immediately to, immediately adjacent to it, which there will be certain development fees that will be required of the developer, but the TGA is not going to be required per this process.
Thank you.
Any, do we have any other questions?
So would it, would it be a variance request and then later on for then, for the parking situation?
So, and so forgive me, the discussion about actually putting landscaped parking islands within, that can be, that can be reviewed and approved administratively as an alternative, or excuse me, as an alternative landscape plan. So we would work, the planner would work with the petitioner to, to make that make sense. It's not the intent to, especially in a use in which a tow yard, a lot of these things would be easily damaged. The landscaping wouldn't provide the value. So we would work with the petitioner to ensure that the landscaping were moved or some sort of alternative were done for, for the use.
But the question also for me is the $2,600 per parking space. Is that a variance request they would make to the Board of Zoning Adjustment or?
No, so no, the, no, and for, because this site is not subject to TGA, this site is not required by ordinance for TGA.
The $2,600 is the TGA rate?
Yes, is TGA.
Generation assessment fee.
So, now, but Transportation Public Works does have other authorities by which they can impose other fees upon the property owner. But the, the assessment of TGA is not required through the conditional use permit process.
I did have a question, is the relocated Green Park Road already complete? Is it already there?
I, I thought that we had it worked out prior to us going through all the site development. And now, all of a sudden, it shows up here on Friday that, that they're, they said not to have it. I then talked to Greg Marshall and he said, well, he said, I don't know that we didn't call that wrong. Because it is a situation where if we did have it on Rebus Barracks Road, it actually would be, it would be a detriment because there's so much traffic. And that, this would cause a traffic jam as compared with Green Park Road, which hasn't that much traffic. So coming and going on Green Park would not be noticeable.
Yeah, I think my question was, is the relocated Green Park Road already there? It's already in existence?
No, ma'am. The whole road is not there, it's, it's just being relocated.
And are you relocating that as part of this project?
No, no, it's a county project.
Okay, and the county has also proposed vacating Avenue H. It says proposed vacation Avenue H.
Okay, that's in process. That has nothing to do with this petition, no.
Sure, yeah, I was just curious.
Yes.
Okay.
I thank you, thank all of you.
At this time, do I have any individuals that would like to speak in favor for a group? Do I have any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Do I have any individuals that would like to speak for a group in opposition or concern to this petition? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition or concern for this petition? Okay, if not, we don't need a rebuttal. And I'd like to see a hand of folks that are in favor of this petition. One, two, three, four, okay. In opposition? None. And a hand count, the crowd count is four in favor. And that concludes the petition, thank you. And now we have PC 21-25, 1213 Enterprises LLC.
All right, good evening, commissioners, this is 21-25, 1213 Enterprises LLC. The request is to change from a C8 to an R3 for proposed use of a single-family residence on a .24 acre tract, is located on the northeast of intersection of North Highway 67 and Robbins Mill Road. It is up there in North County. And on the right is outlined in red, an aerial, the residence outlined in red. This is just a larger aerial shot. Here is the land use map of the surrounding area. It's primarily commercial along Lindbergh and then in the surrounding areas also single-family and multifamily residences. Here is the public hearing sign facing east, this is at the front of the residence. This is facing northeast down Robbins Mills Road. This is facing south, the front of the property again. This is facing southwest down Robbins Mills Road toward Lindbergh. This is facing east down the side drive onto the larger site in question. And this is facing northwest, facing the rear of the property. And now the petitioner can speak.
Good evening, everyone, Michelle Perkins here for 1213 Enterprises. We'll just jump right in here. So a little background about the property. So we are here asking for it to be rezoned from a C8 to an R3. And these are just some pictures of the property. This is our preliminary site development plan. Aerial view. Basically, we're seeking to rezone the house to be a separate entity from the current commercial property. We are proposing to rezone R3. I'm sorry, we are proposing to rezone to an R3 to be able to lease out the house to other families, you know, which helps grow the community and add to the economic growth and stability of the area. A little bit about 1213, since we'll be, we have two presentations back-to-back. Basically, we're all about growing the community that we currently live in, which is the North County area, growing nature and growing opportunities. So the residential rezone, we talked about that. On that same property that we're trying to split will be an indoor plant shop and a vendor market, which will also be presented in our next slides. The rezone is consistent with proper land use practices, so no negative impacts on neighboring uses, commercial and residential neighbors. The rezone would allow us to repurpose an unused property that has been vacant. I think it's probably been vacant now for about 10 years. It's a really nice three-bedroom ranch home, walkout basement, just sitting. And the site is compatible with the uses of the adjacent properties. So all of the properties on that street are just regular residential homes for families. Anyone have questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
So it's one, it's one site now and you're going to split it into two and make the home residential?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, we, we thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, do I stand, I know I'm going again.
You can have a seat for a moment.
It'll only take a second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
At this time, is there any individuals that would like to speak in favor for a group for this petition? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Are there any individuals that like to speak for a group in opposition or concern? No. Are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition or concern this petition? No. Won't be any reason for rebuttal. And it's this time, can we see a hand count of those in favor of this petition? There's four. In opposition? Zero. Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes this particular hearing. And now we will have PC 22 and 23-25 1213 Enterprises LLC.
All right, back again. PC 22 and 23-25 1213 Enterprises LLC. This is for a request from a C8 to a C2 and a CUP in the C2 for the proposed use of an outdoor vendor market and sales. The tract is a 2.59 acre tract, is located northeast on the intersection of North Highway 67th Street and Robbins Mills Road. Once again, is in North County and the larger site in question is outlined in red. And a larger aerial shot. The land use map again. This is the public hearing sign facing northwest at the entrance of the site on Lindbergh Road and facing west of Lindbergh. Facing south across the property on Lindbergh. And facing east of Lindbergh. We're facing north up at the entrance of the site here. This is west, looking west on the site. This is looking east primarily on the parking lot of the site. Facing north, this is the primary structure, existing structure on the site. Facing east. Facing northwest on the back portion of the site. Again, facing northwest. Facing east toward the residences behind the property. And then facing south showing the rear of the property.
Can you go back to that last slide? Is the house sitting, is this the house where the fence is? It sits up higher than the old nursery that's there?
Are you asking about like the?
The one you were just talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, so the house is further back up the hill.
This is on a drive, there's a site, a drive coming in on the side off Robbins Mills Road and that's between this site and that residential property that she's requesting for a change in zoning.
Well, right now it's all one big property.
Yes.
All right, petitioner, please.
Back again. Okay, so I want to be clear that Ms. Williams' question was answered. So it is all zoned the same, but it's really separate. The houses, with the houses and the commercial property is kind of separate, separated. Okay. So we kind of, I won't repeat this exact same thing, but this is an aerial view. We are seeking to rezone this from the current C8 status to a C2 retail to be able to open an indoor plant shop and vendor market. I will also need a conditional use permit for the vendor market. So two requests in these, in this one presentation. So we already talked about who we are. And this rezone is consistent, but what I would like to say, because this is basically all the same stuff, I won't bore you with that. But basically, we want to kind of restore that Bellman Nursery to its previous, previous grandeur. It used to be a really nice spot. Remember buying like my trees there and shrubs. But we want to put an indoor plant shop where people will come. You guys are probably seeing like those candle places where you go in and you pick the candle and then you pick the scent and then you go and make it. So it'll be very similar to that. You pick your type of plant, you pick your pot and then you, you, you make it, yes. So the name of it will be Soil. So we'll have that as well as, because it's so much land and just that little tiny building, we are proposing to have a vendor market. So on the weekends only, for a couple of hours each day, if you are a part of the community and you sell bracelets or t-shirts or honey or, you know, just really trying to make it that community, family place. That's it.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to say it sounds like a really great idea, like something that my family would like to enjoy stopping by.
I'll make sure that everyone gets an invitation to the grand opening. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
What's the parking situation for, for this weekend vendor situation?
So we have quite a bit, quite a few parking spaces. We'll be utilizing 29. But again, this isn't a place where you come and sit all day. You know, people are usually, you come in, you buy what you want and you, you leave. So we have ample parking.
Could we take the slides back a little bit, show the parking lot there?
Is this a good view or?
I would go back one more to your site plan.
Oh, hold on. Here?
Yes, that has the parking lot striped.
I can't see it, but.
The slides are on the podium in front of you also, yeah.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Okay, and did anyone have questions about this part?
Are you planning on repaving the parking lot?
Yes, so we're going to get rid of the weeds and re-black top it and have it re-striped.
Is the primary entrance going to be off of Lindbergh there?
Yeah, that's, yeah, pretty much the only entrance.
And then that other, that's back behind that is more towards for the residents.
Correct.
Got you, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other?
And your hours of business?
How is business?
Hours of business.
Oh, hours of business. So we'll be closed on Monday, Tuesday. So it is 10 to 6. Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Saturday and Sunday, 10 to 7 for the plant shop. For the vendor market, more of like a 9 to 1 or 2 o'clock. Yeah, both days, Saturday and Sunday.
And just for the commission's understanding, this is a request to revert or to change the zoning to C2 Shopping District, which will provide the property owner with a significant number of development rights, which are very appropriate for a large site of its, of its nature. And then the conditional use permit will allow her to have those vendor fairs on a regular basis without having to come back to St. Louis County for each one of those as a special event permit, which in and of itself is, is limited in how frequently you can do that.
I have a question about where the vendor fair or when, where the vendors would be set up.
So let me go back to here. So you see the white building, right? So right next to it, there are two, it used to be a.
Greenhouse?
Greenhouse, but it's all open, but it's covered and that's where the vendors are set up. So it's going to be really neat. I'm, we're really, we're super excited about it, so.
Do you have any other plans for the rest of the site? It looked like there was a lot. If you would go to the site plan, the area to the east.
Yeah, so in the future, right now, we've had this property for almost a year, paying mortgage with no income. So we need to get in there and get something going first. So we do have plans, but not until we can, you know, stop the bleeding here, so. Yeah.
I, I have one more question. This is for.
Yes, ma'am.
The lot subdivision? Is that done administratively or is that a whole nother petition they'll go through?
Uh, that will be done administratively. They will do a, they'll do a, I don't know whether it'll be a lot split. I believe it'll be a lot split procedure, which will go along with the changes in zoning for the residential and the commercial. So those would, that subdivision would be completed prior to the completion of the site development plans and occupancy. Those would be completed.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank, thank you, everyone, for your time.
Okay, at this time, are there any persons representing a group that would wish to speak in favor of the petition? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Are there any persons representing a group who wish to speak in opposition or concern to the petition? No. Are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition or concern of the petition? None. We won't need any rebuttal then. And can we, I get a hand count of the people that are in favor of this petition? Would be four in opposition to this petition? Zero. Four to zero. Thank you very much, and that concludes this hearing. I need a, I'd like to have a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition, nay. Eyes have it. And we are closed for our public hearing until next month, August 11th. Would that be correct for our public hearing?
I believe that's correct, August 11th. Yes. Do you want to wait, wait a minute, Mr. Taylor? Would you like to?
Somebody like to take like a couple minute recess here?
Then we have a short, short business meeting.
Okay. I'd like to call this executive meeting to order. Take roll, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. First, we have amended to June 9th, 2025 Public Hearing Executive Meeting and Planning Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Five to zero. Six to zero. Six to zero. Next, we have status sheet of December 18th, 2024 through July 9th, 2025. I hope everybody had a chance to take a look at that. Is there any objections or corrections to the status sheet? If not, I have a motion for approval of the status sheet, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Nays? Eyes have it. Six to zero. Next, we have a letter of recommendation for PC 19-25 Richard and Ruth D. Lo.
Good evening. PC 19-25 Richard and Ruth D. Lo is again a request for a conditional use permit in the C2 Shopping District for an apartment dwelling unit located on an tract size of 0.41 acres on the southwest side of the intersection of Graboy Road and Philo Avenue. This is coming before the commission tonight as a letter of decision. As you may recall from public hearing, this site is located South County and the site is outlined in red on your right on aerial. This is a larger aerial of the site again, outlined in red. This is a request for a conditional use permit in the C2 Shopping District for an apartment dwelling unit. And no proposed changes are for the site, are being made to the site. It will remain as is. Staff is recommending approval. The proposal meets the four-pronged conditional use permit test as a residential dwelling unit is low in intensity in both nature and scale and will not be a detriment to the permitted uses in the district or neighboring parcels. The site is visually compatible with surrounding development and no site improvements are proposed at this time. The proposed use would not be a detriment to the public health, safety or general welfare of those in the surrounding areas. And the use is consistent with good planning practice as the use is not out of context in respect to its surrounding uses and would be desirable to serve, to serve housing needs of the county residents. So at this time, I ask for a motion.
Heard the recommendations department. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Go ahead.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Do I have any questions? Any questions? Okay. With that being said, there's been a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Six to zero. Next, we have a letter of recommendation for PC 15-25 Merits Holdings, Inc.
All right, this is letter of recommendation for our PC 15-25 Merits Holdings Incorporated. It is for a request from a C8 to an M3 for the purpose of marijuana cultivation and all permitted M1 uses. It is a 14.32 acre tract located on north side of North Highway Drive and west of Larkin Williams Road. It is located in Southwest County off of I-44. And here's an aerial shot outlining it in red. And this letter of recommendation, consistent with the Planning Commission's actions last week, we recommend approval.
Heard the department's recommendation of approval. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
Been a first and a second. Are there any questions or concerns? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Six to zero. Next, we have a site plan for PC 27-24 Block Holly Commercial Real Estate Services LLC.
PC 27-24 Block Holly Commercial Real Estate Services LLC is an amended development in the M3 and FPM3. The proposed uses are office warehouse, including outdoor storage. The tract size is 7.22 acres, located on the north side of Baumgartner Road, approximately 1,500 feet east of Baumgartner Industrial Drive. This site is in South County and you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. From this larger aerial, you can see some of the surrounding development, which include some single-family residences along Baumgartner, or along Old Baumgartner and industrial uses. This is the site plan sheet showing the proposed multi-tenant office warehouse building and parking. The petitioner proposed and showed outdoor storage at public hearing and the, the ordinance allows for outdoor storage. However, none is currently proposed at this time. So they have been advised that if a future tenant would like outdoor storage, they would send an amended plan back to the department for review. So it is all indoor storage at this time. This is the landscape plan showing primarily landscaping along, new landscaping along the street frontage and the western property line adjacent to a single-family home. And then along the northern side, there's existing tree mass that will be retained. This is the lighting plan, which meets the requirements of the site-specific ordinance. And these are the architectural elevations. And these are the architectural elevations, meeting the requirements of the ordinance. So the department is recommending approval.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the department for approval. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Been a first and a second. Do we have any discussion? No discussion at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it, six to zero. Next, we have, go to the order, item about.
We've got one more site plan.
Okay.
Sorry.
Right through there, I'm sorry. Site plan for PC 02-25 May Commercial Properties.
PC 02-25 May Commercial Properties is an amended C8-plan commercial district. The proposed use is a dental laboratory and all C6 Office and Research Service District permitted uses. The tract size is 1.09 acres and is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Sulfur Spring Drive, Sulfur Spring Road and Arbor Spring Drive. This site is in West County and is outlined in red on the aerial. Here's the site plan sheet. They are proposing to reutilize the existing building, and they are restriping some parking and providing a loading space on the western side of the building, as well as a new trash enclosure on the northwest corner of the building. But primarily, the site will remain as it is currently developed. And these are the architectural elevations, showing the site re-cladded in a new mix of materials. And the department is recommending approval.
Okay, you've heard the department's recommendation for approval. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
One quick question. Was that all existing landscaping, or was there new landscaping?
It's pretty much all existing. They're doing a little bit of new, but not significant.
So there's a drive-through?
There is an existing drive-through, however, they are not proposing to use it. It was, it used to be a dry cleaners' building.
And the parking lot area over on the left-hand side, is that? That's just for the overhead door? It doesn't look that there's any striping or?
That's correct. It's just a loading area. That's existing pavement.
Okay.
That, that's from the cleaners?
Right.
Any other questions? I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it, six to zero. And next, we have, go to the order, about parliamentary procedure.
So before I, before we jump into that real quick, before we adjourn for the evening, I defer, I wanted to announce to the Planning Commission a congratulations to Gretchen Landgraf. Gretchen has been promoted to senior planner in the Department of Planning, and we're very happy for her. So Gretchen's been with us for more than three years. She has demonstrated excellent growth and knowledge of the planning field, and we really look forward to her being a part of the department for a really long time. Really great job, Gretchen. We're just really excited that you are a part of our team, so. So commissioners, so with tomorrow evening, I'm hopeful that two new commissioners will be confirmed by the county council, giving us eight of our nine members. And so I think it is a really good time for us to perhaps have a parliamentary procedure training and workshop. And what we would do is not simply stand up at the podium and chat with you, but instead, plan a time for us to either meet in the side room or up on the fifth floor and actually discuss and go through parliamentary training so that we can make sure that your meetings are running as smoothly as possible. And especially with those two new folks, I think that it's just a really good time to brush up on that, just to make sure that, that, that we're all on top of that. So our recommendation for that is to do it before our next public hearing, which is going to be on August 11th. So would be, essentially, we would block out an hour. We would publicly advertise it as a work session of the Planning Commission to go over parliamentary training. That would be the only item on your agenda. And we would, I and Mel would go through basics of motions, you know, but just more in-depth about the kinds of documents that you see, how the, you know, how to run the meetings, how, you know, those kinds of things. And we would be working with Mr. Taylor to, you know, make sure that we're good, that we are giving to you all good information. So if that time, date, and time works for you, we would just prepare it and plan for it.
So you're saying that's at 7:00 PM, or we'd come early at 6:00?
We'd come early. So this would be prior, so public hearing would still be the normal 7:00 PM, but we would meet earlier than that, perhaps at 5:30 or 5:45, to plan for an hour, give a little bit of a break, and then go into public hearing. Public hearing, yes, which would be August the 11th.
Can I just ask for you to set a time? Is it possible?
Well, the, yes, if the commission would, would the commission prefer 5:30 or 5:45?
I would prefer 5:45.
5:45?
Whatever works for, I'm flexible. What's best, if what you think we can, if this can maybe take a couple times or one time?
Hey, if it, if it takes another time, we can do it, but we can plan for an hour, and then see how that, and go from there.
5:45.
5:45. And so Mary will make sure that that is sent out to you all, 5:45. We will make sure that that is publicly noticed per requirements.
And I would appreciate if Anderson would do his usual thing and give us a call.
Yes, absolutely, understood.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Tomorrow is when the, it's on the county council's agenda. The STL Co. 2050 is on their agenda starting tomorrow, so. And as soon as we know the committee, the whole date, we will let you all know.
Are we supposed to attend that tomorrow?
No, you, no, there's no, it's.
Will you be presenting that, or is it just on the agenda?
The, not tomorrow. So when the, when the council sets the committee of the whole date, that is when our AE Comm will come and actually make the presentation to the council. So they'll come in person, and Mel will present with me, standing behind them, cheering them on.
So tomorrow is just the first reading?
Yes, tomorrow is just a, it's being received and filed.
Okay. Is there a, is there a motion for adjournment? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, and we will see you all at our next meeting, August 4th.
Yes, for executive meeting.
At 6:00.
6:00 PM, yes. And it would be, it's the, it will be back to our regular electric, electric, electric meetings.
Electric meetings.
Electric meetings, virtual, virtual, yes.
I'm going to mute everybody now.